Okay, we're ready. Let's call this meeting to order of the Sacramento City Council. Please call a roll.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Here.
Councilmember Pluckebom? Councilmember Maple?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
Mayor McCarty?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple, will you lead us in the pledge and land acknowledgement?
My pleasure. Please stand if you're able. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Dalian Plains Miwap, P'chwin-Win-Tun peoples, and the people of the Wilton-Rantaria, Sacramento's only federally-recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. So remain standing, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, we have one special presentation. The Amyotrophic Sclerosus, Lateral Sclerosis Awareness Month presented by Councilmember Vang.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll keep this short because I don't know if Erin is here today. But good afternoon, colleagues and friends in the public. Today, I am incredibly honored to present a resolution recognizing May 2025 as ALS Month. Across the country and here in Sacramento, the month of May is set aside to raise awareness about ALS. And for those that don't know, but ALS is a progressive and fatal neural degenerative disease. It gradually robs people of their ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually even to breathe, while their minds often remain sharp. Every 90 minutes, someone is diagnosed with ALS and they actually pass away from it. Most individuals survive only two to five years after the diagnosis. And at this moment, there is no known cure. This year's recognition in particular is especially meaningful because it was actually brought to our attention by Erin, who is a District 8 resident who has personally been impacted by ALS. And she, I don't think, is here today, but really wanted to take this moment to just share Erin's strength and her advocacy and remind us why it's so important to continue to speak out, raise awareness, and really demand better outcomes for those that are living with this disease. And so, on behalf of the mayor and Sacramento City Council, I am really proud to present this resolution to her and will make sure that she gets a copy. Thank you so much.
So, no one's here to do the presentation?
Yeah.
Moving on to the consent calendar, Mayor, we have 14 items that are on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Are there any items that...
Councilmembers wish to discuss or pull any items?
Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks. I want to, I need to recuse on item number one and a quick comment on item number 12. Thanks.
Mayor, I'd like to discuss item number 10 and on the consent calendar.
Okay. All right.
Would you like to go with item 10 first?
Yes, so call those items and discussions one first.
That would be item 10 first?
Yeah.
Okay. So, item number 10.
Thank you very much. One, this is again exciting progress that we're making on a number of affordable housing projects. This is in a number of districts, but the one in District 6, River City Apartments off of Elvis Avenue. Family housing, appreciate the work that's been done in this. The, and also the fact that it's next to Sac State. And so, I, as I mentioned before, once we actually opened the doors and, or before we opened the doors, that we work with the applicant and the university to recruit onsite on campus so that students who meet the income requirement and families at Sac State who meet the income requirement can take advantage of this so that we can fully maximize the TOD and the vision of that 65th Street Transit Village corridor. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
A second. Item number 12 by Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick note of this authorization to sign the petition for the renewal of the Del Paso Boulevard Business and Property, Business and Property Improvement District or P-Bid and to give authority to cast votes in support for the city properties of that renewal. I want to thank the city staff for bringing this to us, staying on top of this. Redoing the district is incredibly important to the efforts that we need to make in order to attract new economic investment to the Boulevard, to North Sacramento, to help support and retain existing businesses. It's a key tool in all those efforts. And so, I want to make sure that we noted it because of its significance. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, no other comments if you'd like to... Sorry, missed him. Sorry about that.
Out of an abundance of caution, I'll recuse on item one.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the consent calendar with a recusal from Councilmembers Dickinson, Pluckebom, and Add McCarty to that as well for item number one. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No abstentions? Hear none?
All right, the consent calendar passes with three recusals from, on item one, from Councilmember Dickinson, Councilmember Pluckebom, and Mayor McCarty.
Okay, next item.
Mayor, there was a request to hear the SHRA items first and then the public hearing?
Okay.
All right. So, we will be moving to item number 18. The annual reports of the Housing Trust Fund Ordinance, Mixed Income Housing Ordinance, Home Investment Partnerships Program, Permanent Location Housing Allocation, State Local Housing Trust Fund, Residential Hotel Unit Withdrawal Conversion, and Demolition Ordinance, and the City-City Affordable Housing Plan.
Christine Weigert with SHRA. I believe we have a PowerPoint with this presentation. Well, while I'm waiting for that to come up, I'll go ahead and start. This is the Housing Workshop to Review Affordable Housing Programs and Funding for the 2024 Calendar Year. This also serves as SHRA's annual report on three city ordinances. The Housing Trust Fund Ordinance, the Mixed Income Housing Ordinance, and the Single Room Occupancy Ordinance. And lastly, it serves as the annual update for the Affordable Housing Plan adopted as a result of the City-City Partnership Agreement. So, the City of Sacramento has two development impact fee programs, one for residential and the other for non-residential development. And the revenues generated depend on the fee level per square foot of new construction and the amount of building which occurs in any given year. The first is the Housing Trust Fund Ordinance, which authorizes the collection of impact fees on non-residential construction to fund low-income housing. The Housing Trust Fund Fee Ordinance was adopted in 1989. And to date, there's been over $39.7 million collected, plus an additional $15.3 million in repayments from loans from these funds. In 2024, $411,000 was collected. The projects currently underway utilizing these funds are listed below on the slide, all of which were brought before the City Council individually for approval. The Mixed Income Housing Ordinance is a fee on all new residential development. $10.8 million has been collected since 2015, when the ordinance was revised to become fee-based. In 2024, $1.7 million was collected. And again, projects utilizing the funds are listed on the slide. SHRA administers funds from both, from two state programs. The Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program, or PLHA, and Local Housing Trust Funds. PLHA funds are generated through recording fees on residential real estate transactions, actually, all real estate transactions. 25% of the funds must be reserved for single-family down payment assistance and the remaining for multifamily affordable housing projects. To date, SHRA has received four years of funding allocations. But in 2024, we receive both 2023 and 2024 allocations for a total of $5.7 million. The Local Housing Trust Funds are state funds that can be matched dollar for dollar with the city's housing trust funds. Their funds are awarded on a competitive basis and for the creation of affordable housing or the rehabilitation or preservation of affordable housing. SHRA was awarded $5 million in 2023, but we did not receive the funds until 2024, and most of which were allocated to the Sacramento, sorry, Central Sacramento Studios to project. SHRA administers a federal housing entitlement grant from HUD. On behalf of the city, it's the home program, and home funds are used for multifamily housing production or preservation. And in 2024, we received $2.2 million in entitlement, along with another $1.3 million in loan repayments. And again, you can see the projects that are under construction now. In addition to reporting on the funding sources received, SHRA ports annually on the city's Single Room Occupancy, or SRO, ordinance. In 2006, the city passed an ordinance that identified 10 downtown SRO units totaling 100 and, well, 712 units, which required to be maintained or replaced. Specifically, the report provides the annual update on the number of residential hotel units withdrawn and the number of constructed annually. In 2024, there were no changes in the units withdrawn or added. The city and county entered into a partnership agreement in 2022 to improve coordination on homeless efforts. The agreement required a production of an affordable housing plan to analyze the issues and set goals. The Affordable Housing Plan was developed with community input and approved by both the Board of Supervisors and City Council in October 2023. And there are two sections of the plan. First is the permanent supportive housing development, and the second part is rehousing. So, under the permanent supportive housing section, the measurable goals are to create 300 permanent supportive housing units and 100 affordable housing units each year. In 2024, we created 303 permanent supportive housing units. So, we just surpassed our goal a little bit. Plus 1100, over 1100 units of affordable housing. So, we very much surpassed that goal. But other accomplishments are listed on the screen, including the county amending their zoning codes and plan check process to expedite affordable housing and establishing a tracking mechanism and other efforts. For rehousing, the goal is 200, I'm sorry, yeah, 220 rehousing opportunities annually. Most of these efforts are carried out by either the County of Sacramento or Sacramento Steps Forward. But to the, in 2024, they created service standards and performance matrix were established, and landscape analysis of rehousing capacity was developed, all in an effort to also find additional housing to operate and increase rehousing efforts. So, this concludes my presentation, and staffs available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Would you like to?
Oh, Councilmember Kaplan.
Just a quick question because it shows that we, you know, produce more affordable housing than, you know, kind of like we are planning is on an annual basis. Can you just describe why that happened last year and what you see for the next couple of years? Because I think it's an important context we actually need to say out loud.
Absolutely. When looking at the goals that were established in 2022 and 2023, it was based on the funding sources that we had available at the time and what we believed could be accomplished. I will say the units that we produced or reported on just now for 2024, so many of those units were financed three or four, even five years prior. And of course, we all know that in 2020, additional resources came to SHRA and the city and the county from both the federal and state level because of the COVID. So, we're seeing the benefits of that now. Of course, those were one-time funding sources. So, we're likely to see the production level start to decline.
Because we don't have those same resources. But I, but I think it's important that we address it now of like, we've done a really good job, but it takes three or four years potentially, if not more, to get those units on the market. And so, next year, we could see a reduction because we don't have any of those additional resources coming in, and we have less federal money.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving to item number 19, Ms. Weigert. It's the 2026 One-Year Action Plan Federal Programs. No? Not on that item, sorry.
Thank you. Stephanie's going to get this one.
Federal Programs Allocation Process Workshop Number Two.
Thank you. You should have a PowerPoint for this one, yes, thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Stephanie Green. I'm the Federal Program Manager for Federal Programs here at SHRA. Today's presentation is the Second Workshop for the 2026 Annual Action Plan for the allocation of Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, funds. The action plan process started at the beginning of the year with workshop number one. And following that, SHRA met with city staff to identify potential projects and review them for eligibility and readiness. We also received and reviewed any project suggestions from councilmembers. The purpose of today's workshop will be to present a draft list of potential infrastructure and public facilities projects for CDBG funding in the 2026 Action Plan and receive input on those and any other new ideas for activities. I would like to note that these budget estimates that I'll show you are preliminary and based on previous allocations of CDBG funding, and they are subject to change based on the final federal budget decisions. At this time, the president's proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year includes the elimination of the CDBG program. So, that signals a potential decrease or even total loss of funding for these projects. We anticipate receiving a little over $4.6 million in CDBG in 2026. And again, this is based on previous year allocations. This slide shows an estimate of how those funds would be allocated among the various types of programs. Generally, we'll receive close to the maximum of 15% for public services and 20% for grant planning and admin. And from there, we'll work backwards to identify funds for public facilities and housing projects. This year, we anticipate allocating about $1.16 million to the infrastructure and public facilities improvements and about 525 to housing programs. The HUD loan repayment, you'll see on the screen, is the Section 108 repayment for Marisol Village. And the Capital Reserve is a bucket set aside for potential project budget adjustments. So, this slide shows the draft list of recommended infrastructure and public facility projects. As a reminder, when we are looking at which projects to prioritize, we consider not only eligibility and community impact, but also the likelihood of the project being able to spend down funds within the next 12 to 18 months as well, or whether or not we have spent money on the design of these projects in the past and whether gap funding will be needed to finish construction and therefore close out the project with HUD. Also, we like to see that the project leverages other funding sources. Based on this, the projects we recommend for 2026 are the Robla Park Restroom Project and the Earl Warren Park Restroom Project. These are both projects that have received planning and design funding in the past and will require CDBG to complete construction of the project. They also anticipate that they could complete construction within the year. These next two slides include other projects that were proposed for CDBG funding, which were evaluated but not recommended this year to proceed for funding in 2026, but may be considered for funding in future action plan years. These include the Austin Street Safe Routes to School feasibility study, Babcock Park Improvements, Dixian Alley, North Gate Boulevard Complete Streets, North Gate Wall, the Dos Rios Site Remediation, Envision Broadway Oak Park, Mangon Park Community Center, and Fruit Ridge Complete Streets, and Nun Park Improvements. And this slide shows an overview of the action plan process moving forward. Over the next few months, we'll continue to meet with city staff as needed to refine this draft list of projects and finalize our budget by August. Then in October, we'll return to you with a final list of projects for approval before we submit the plan to HUD around November. So, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions or feedback.
Public comment on the side there? No public comment. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. I'm curious about a couple of things. Excuse me. The Robla Park Restrooms, and maybe I missed it in your, in your recitation of the schedule, but what would be the, what would be the expectation about getting to construction on those?
So, we do have Jason with City Parks here, who could maybe answer more detail.
Oh, yeah, there he is. Okay, I didn't see Jason back there. Okay.
I'll let him answer that question.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Jason Weisman, Park Planning and Development Manager. So, the Robla Project right now is in design with funding that was funded through CDBG last year, 2025. So, we would anticipate receiving these 2026 funding. As soon as we have that, we could go out to bid, and we'd be ready to go, so it'd be construction-ready. So, we're hoping we could have this done by the end of 2026.
Of the fiscal, the fiscal year or the calendar year?
Well, it just kind of depends on when we receive the funding. Sometimes, like, after it gets approved, it takes, you know, we might not get the funding until, say, November or December. So, you know, we're looking at the end of calendar year, most likely 2026.
Okay. And I think, as you know, Jason, there's, there's also considerable interest in a, in a community center for Robla Park, which I think is fully merited. Is there some thinking with respect to the, the design or placement of the restrooms that hopefully we'll approve moving forward with today? In, in concert with, hopefully, again, a future community center? I assume they can't be built to be incorporated necessarily, but I'm just wondering if you've been thinking about that because I know you're aware of it.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. The restroom will kind of be placed to serve centrally the park location mostly right now. But in the park site plan, there is a location for the clubhouse. So, it'll be separate from that. It's not taking away from that space for a future clubhouse. It's just the funding for a new clubhouse is substantially more and then identifying ongoing funds for maintenance and utility bills for that as well.
Absolutely. The, the location for the clubhouse site is to the west side, if I recall the site.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks, Jason. I appreciate that. And I had a question on, on the future projects, when you had six or seven of them. And I'm, can you talk a little bit more about what your expectation is with regard to reviewing and hopefully someday approving those? Is it, is it to go through some sort of vetting of which, you're not going to be able to do them all in one year, obviously. So, which ones come first?
Yes, I'm sorry. So, this, this process here, we're just looking at the 2026 Action Plan. So, the only projects approved, recommended for approval at this time would be those two projects, the Robla Park and the Earl Warren. The rest of the projects, we just wanted to show for transparency what other projects had been recommended for this year. And they may be considered for future years if they are still a priority for, you know, other people, for city council members or for city staff. And so, we could look at them again next year. And so, we'll do this process all over again. We'll do two additional workshops for future action plan years each, for each year. And if those are brought up as potential recommended projects to look at, we can look at those again.
Okay. So, I wanted to make sure whether or not it was the case that you were looking at those as, in a sense, next in line, but it doesn't sound like you are.
No, no. We, I mean, they could be potentially, but no, they're not like put on a list to like, you know, prioritize to look at next year. So, we would ask that if you are interested in having those funded next year, that you let us know.
Okay, all right. And so, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Maple?
Thank you. Just really, again, I know I say this every time, but I really want to appreciate you and, and your team for the process that goes into this. It's very collaborative, working with city staff, working with our offices, community members, just to make sure we get a good list of projects. So, I just really want to thank you and feel like I learn a little bit more every time. Looking down on the other project request list, I know Mangon Park came from our community. But I'm just curious, is the reason why, let's say, it's something that eventually does get put forth as a project for CDBG, why we would combine design and construction together for this large dollar amount versus maybe doing design first at a smaller amount? I feel like having the full, like, $3 million might make it more challenging for someone to wrap their head around and see that as a viable project.
Yeah, so I think we have been mostly doing this, looking at it by design and then construction. So, we'll fund design and engineering in one action plan, like we did for Robla Park, and then we'll fund the construction in a future year for exactly the reasons you mentioned. It's easier to spend down, you know, the design and engineering funds first and then the construction. However, I do, would like to note that HUD does want to see that if we spend money on design and engineering, that it will result in an actual physical project. So, we would only want to approve, approve design and engineering of a project if we know it will eventually result in an actual project.
Okay. So, that could be, you know, one, one time around or however long, you know, the way that costs have been going up, who knows? But let's say, one time around, we can do the design for Mangon Park, and then the next year, we can say, okay, we did the design. So, now we have more viable projects, so then we can go for the next round, the next round. Okay. That would just be my, my ask, you know, I'd hope, I'd love to see this project move forward eventually. I do recognize it's probably years on the line as we try to piece together the money. But, you know, everything starts somewhere. So, I think it'd be good to maybe start out with just that design number and then move on. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan? I just want to add comment of thank you on the Robla restroom. You know, I've been hearing it for the community since I got on. Yes, they want the, the community center. But I think it's, it would be amazing for that community who has a lot of youth sports out there, so they don't have to rent, you know, portables, being this a community park, and every community park is supposed to have a restroom, that we get to fulfill it. I'm sorry it took 20 years, but thank you. Wonderful. And congrats to the Robla community. I know people always say, hey, that's, it's in the city of Sacramento, everybody. Don't forget about us, so. All right, Mayor Protem Gera?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. And both with Robla and with Earl Warren Restrooms, I'm assuming, are they on the same construction timeframe as well?
I believe so.
Yes. Okay, good. Okay, and then, and we, unfortunately, we switched out Colonial. But are there other, you know, parks that meet the income requirements where, where we can see restrooms as, as an opportunity to go? Because if we're using the same design for, for some of them, obviously, there may be some characteristics difference. But I do feel like we need to try to achieve more restrooms at these parks and, and more so because particularly where we have, you know, small playgrounds for, for the younger kids. Usually, you know, trying to get home with, you know, your, your younger children is a challenge. So, have we been looking at that on, on the park side on?
I don't know if Jason wants to take that. I know he's very familiar with the CDBG requirement, so he may have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unfortunately for Colonial Park, that did fall outside of the boundary of area that was eligible for CDBG funding. So, that's why we chose Earl Warren, you know, so the, it was just another project in the district. So, we are evaluating mostly existing restrooms. You know, we want to take care of what we have first before we, you know, try to keep building new. I mean, that's kind of what we're trying to do. So, if there are parks that are with needy restrooms, I mean, we've got them on a list, and we're just trying to find out which ways to fund them. So, if they are in CDBG-eligible areas, then we'll put them on the list. This year, we knew the, the funding was a little tight, and we already had two restrooms that were being funded. So, we didn't spend a lot of time looking for additional sites.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I just, that's where I think, you know, you know, I know there's discussions about a park bond or what, but I think if we can at least create that and identify which ones do fall under the CDBG boundary area. So, you know, I saw Danny Nun Park in that area. You know, if I think about it, Ebiogarredo Park as well, areas where they're, you know, trying to get home in time, you know, with, with, you know, one or two littles is going to be a challenge. So, and at least if we have the inventory of like, okay, these are areas where we can target because I do feel that the design of these are pretty much cookie cutter for us to achieve. And I don't discount the, the issues with maintenance and trying to keep them so that they're also, you know, one, nice, but also hygienically, you know, being able to be. you know, one, nice, but also hygienically, you know, being able to be used as well. So, okay, well, thank you. Appreciate that, and I think we want to continue to, you know, one, address the bathroom issues in our parks, and then I'd like to, you know, ensure that if we can, you know, fully funding other complete street projects in those areas that address, you know, pedestrian and bike safety would be a priority for me. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Vang.
Yeah, thank you so much. Quickly, how much money do we have available for CDBG grant, and how much do we have in terms of requests?
I'm sorry. You asked, how much do we have available in CDBG? So we're estimating, let me go back to that slide. So we're estimating total for CDBG funding, about $4.6, and so we're allocating about $1.165 to the infrastructure projects. But again, this is all based on previous allocations, so it's an estimate at this point. We won't know until later this year what the actual budget will be.
Okay.
If I could help, I think our request, based on this report, is about $7, with $7 million for the $1 million available.
Okay. Sounds great. Can you go back to the other district?
To which one? I'm sorry?
To the previous slide. Yeah, that one. With the districts?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Just wanted to say thank you to SHRA and working with city staff on identifying these projects. Just want to name that there are no projects in District 8, even though I know it is a very, you know, it falls within the areas. But all that to say, you know, the past previous years, we have received funding for Wood Park and Susan B. Anthony, and so just wanted to name that as well, because I know my constituents are going to reach out to me and say, hey, there's nothing in District 8. But I know that in previous years, we've spent a lot of the CDBG grant in District 8, but it's just really great to see love in, like, you know, District 5 and District 2 in particular. And so I just wanted to echo my support for that and just say, great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Vang. And I also, you know, received CDBG monies in prior years for District 3, so congratulations to Robla and the communities that got it this year. There's a lot of need, not enough money. And every year, I know staff has to make important decisions and be as fair as possible to all of us here on the dais, to our respective communities. At the end of the day, you know, Sacramento only gets better when we work together and we identify projects and we're able to continue plugging along. So thank you so much for your work. And that is it for this item. Did we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment on this item, and that completes our SHRA items unless Ms. Dozier has something she would like to add.
Okay. This was just review and prior direction, so we're good to go. The next item is item number 20, Authorization for Joint Application for State Home Key Project Funding for Rio Linda Senior Housing Project.
And Vice Mayor, we do have 11 public comments on this item.
How many?
11.
11? Okay. So we'll hear the staff presentation first, and then we will do public comment, and then we'll do council comments, questions, concerns.
Good afternoon, council.
Welcome, Mr. Pedro.
Vice Mayor. So today, we're bringing the, again, I come back to you with more housing. We are bringing item before council today, authorizing to submit a application for the state Home Key Plus funding, but we need to read change into the record. I'm asking that we exempt Section 5, and, city clerk, you want me to read exactly what Section 5 is?
Yes, please.
Okay. So Section 5 reads, "If the application for funding is approved, the city manager or the city manager's designee is authorized to commit $1,500,000 of city HAP permanent supportive housing funding towards the Rio Linda Senior Housing Project." With $1,000, $1,49,254 coming from HAP 4 and $450,746 from HAP 5. Agreements $250,000 or more involving expenditure of the $1,500,000 HAP funding will be brought to city council for approval. So this project that we bring before you is for, again, senior permanent supportive housing on Rio Linda. I did want to start with thanking John Vinoki from Urban Capital and Daniel Perella from Gateway Development Group that are with us today. Thank you, John. And we'll get started on what we're looking at here. So a little background on Home Key and Home Key Plus. Three prior rounds of Home Key were awarded by the state, and it's to expand housing for people experiencing homelessness. And SHRA has secured Home Key funding for four of our motel conversions that we've had, as you can see here, La Mancha, Vista Nueva, Central SAC Studios, and Roadway Inn, which just opened up. And then the city itself has secured Home Key funding for two projects, which is the St. John's Program for Real Change and We. Moving on to the Home Key Plus, so this is our Prop 1 funding. We've heard much about from the governor's release. The, there's a carve-out on the Prop 1 funding, part of it for building out facilities. The other part was, is what we're looking at here, is the permanent supportive housing that was distributed statewide. And so what they did with this is they allocated it for regions. Our region, Sacramento geographical region, includes not only Sacramento, but El Dorado County, Placer County, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba. So for our region, we were given $101 million, and that $101 million is also further split into two categories. $51 million, a little over $51 million, is for the general population allocation, and then just a little bit over $49 million is for the veterans allocation. And so these applications are on a first-come, first-served basis, with a deadline approaching us quickly of May 30th, and we will be bringing another project to you next week as well to look at for application for a Home Key Plus permanent supportive housing program as well. I will note that if we do not apply for all of our allocation in our region and there is leftover funding, that funding will be moved to other regions if they put in for funding that is above what they're allocated. There's a 10% window that they provide for a reserve to put over the amount allocated. We will be slightly exceeding our allocated amount. We did talk to HCD, and they said, put in your applications, and we'll look at them as they come in. If other counties don't fulfill theirs, then their funding comes to us. So that is why we're looking at making sure that we fulfill all of our allocation for our area. We do have, the county is putting in for a project, the city of Rancho Cordova, and then Placer County also has a project in. A little bit about the conceptual site plan of what this will look like. So the location is 2809 through 2821, Rio Linda Boulevard. It's 2.41 acres. There will be 100 units on there. The, it's 42 dwelling units per acre. It will all be ADA compliant, and our population is looking at seniors and senior veterans. It is in District 2. The buildings will be, the dwelling units will be 240 square foot studio units that have a kitchenette, bathrooms, and showers. As you can see here, there's 38 parking stalls that will be there, community garden, park space, shared laundry. We have separate storage units that we have placed throughout the site for storage outside of what you have in your unit. There's, it will be gated and controlled entry. There's community gathering space. There's an area for a dog park, smaller area, and then all services provided as well. The products we'll be using are BOSS Homes. These are HCD-approved product, that is Chapter 11B compliant. So this is compliant with the ADA accessibility and compliance standards, and then they're also Building Code and Title 24 compliant. So just again to note, these are building structures. These are code-compliant, requiring to meet all the compliance of any house that's built in California, and not to be confused with tiny homes that are emergency shelters. These have luxury vinyl windows. They have steel door entry with electronic locks on them. They'll have smoke detectors. Each have an electrical panel and outlets. Again, sink, toilet, and shower. They have an in-wall heating and AC unit, and then a two-burner cooktop with a hood and a microwave. This is an example of what the layout looks like. It's big enough to have a queen bed. There's a closet workstation, again, refrigerator with the cooktop, and then the facilities on the right side. This project is requesting up to $20 million from Home Key for capital costs. This is where we are working very hard to have this come in at under that $200,000 per unit mark. As a reminder, most of our permanent supportive housing projects that we've done in the city are anywhere from $350,000 per unit up to $500-plus thousand per unit. We've worked really hard to contain costs on this, and the Home Key Plus at $200,000 or less per unit is no matching funding from the city to provide this, so it will be 100% Home Key funded for the build-out. The other piece of this is that we will commit the $1.5 million for services, which provides a matching fund of $1.5 from Home Key, and then matching with the other enforceable funding commitments. So these are other commitments that we have from service providers, and that full package is an $8.4 million Home Key award that we'll be asking for. That gets us the five years, but you're doubling that because you're matching that, so we're up to 10 years. This has marched out for 15 years of service provided and 20 years of operations in our workbook right now of what we have. Permanent supportive housing clients and tenants will be leasing, paying rent up to the 30% of their income. And again, this project is deed-restricted for 55 years to be the 30% AMI. Staffing for this project, two full-time property managers on-site and security after hours. We have four full-time case managers, county behavioral health, providing behavioral health services as needed, and clients connected to CalAim, which we'll be working on getting everyone connected to CalAim, will continue to receive all the services that are provided through CalAim. And then we have our veteran clients that'll be in there, and so we'll have all the veteran services that are also provided. One of the unique, this project is a little unique from the others, is that we, as the city, will be taking the lead service provider role, which will allow us to put an RFP out for the services that we provided, allowing us to have more accountability and control of what service providers are providing and what we require them or wish them to provide if we want to adjust that contract. So part, so a little bit of going on this slide, so we have the, and I'll jump to the middle here, we have the expansion of our Roseville Road. We have our street-to-housing program, and then we have this project as well that we'll be bringing, again, we'll be bringing another one to you next week. So we're talking, at least in the, it says 300 here, but we're talking 400 to 500 units of some type of housing that's available. It's a significant number. And, you know, we talk about, later, we're going to talk about our budget. We're going to talk about, you know, economic impacts, and I look at this not just as housing, but if we can get people off of our streets and into housing, the economic impacts of our city is not just about getting people off the streets, but the economic impact of not having a $6 million bill to clean up debris in our streets. It's about pulling public works off of fixing damages caused from, you know, unfortunately unhoused living in different areas of the city. It's about DOU, being able to clean our canals and not having the incident management team have to support and slow down our cleaning of our waterways. The impacts of this is tremendous on our city, and I just want to make that realization. It's not, you know, number one is simply getting people off the streets and getting people housed. Number two is the tremendous impact that will lead to in our city. And with that, I wanted to bring John up from Urban Capital, just to make a few comments.
Okay. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name's John Vinoki, and I represent the developer slash co-applicant here, Urban Capital. I want to emphasize that this is a housing project. It's not a shelter. And this housing project leverages the exceptional quality of BOSS Homes, which is a proven product that's being developed and deployed in very nice communities like Altadena and Santa Barbara. And so if this product is good enough for those cities, I'm confident it's good enough for our city. These 240-square-foot units come complete with kitchenettes and bathrooms. They offer dignified, durable, and efficient living spaces, ensuring long-term stability for our most vulnerable seniors. Their innovative design delivers affordability without compromising quality. As with any project, we are committed to working with the community and city to maximize the aesthetics. For example, painting the units different colors, using different trim around the roof, planting the appropriate landscaping. Beyond housing, this tiny home of community represents an investment of $37 million into District 2 over the next 20 years. Once operational, this project will bring seven full-time jobs, because there's actually going to be five case managers on-site. There was a slight typo in the PowerPoint. We upped that to five case managers, and two on-site managers, not including contract opportunities for janitors, landscapers, security personnel. It will provide volunteer opportunities for community members to engage senior residents and be a haven for individuals working hard to be the best versions of themselves. Further, we are working with the community to draft a good neighbor policy that memorializes management practices that are standard in all of our developments. For example, reporting crime and drug use encampments around the project site to 311 and SAC PD. So these are management practices that flow down to the case managers and on-site managers, property managers, to improve the community and keep eyes on the community. And to that, we also, like all of our developments, have security cameras on our front edge. This includes Rio Linda Boulevard and also the bike trail that have live feeds into SAC PD through their FUSIS technology system. So we're providing, you know, eyes, real-time video sharing of video feeds to law enforcement on an as-needed basis. The rest of our good neighbor policies are kind of memorialized. I don't know if it's possible to show. It says document camera unavailable, so trust me that they're well thought-through, and look forward to optimizing those and working with the community to make sure that we're great neighbors, not just good neighbors. This project will transform a long vacant lot.
Sorry. They made the camera available for you.
Oh, you did? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Some heavenly event. It will show up on the thing. Okay. Well, while those get pulled up, the, there we go. This project will transform a long vacant lot, driving investment in North Sacramento. It's a signal to developers and businesses that this district is a place of progress, fostering economic growth and community pride. Approving this application will not only provide permanent homes, but also catalyze a brighter future for this community. It's a signal to developers and businesses that this district is a place of progress, fostering economic growth and community pride. Approving this application will not only provide permanent homes, but also catalyze a brighter future for this community. And Urban Capital is not looking to be a one-and-done developer in D2. I've seen the potential for years and maintain interest in opportunities, particularly along Del Paso Boulevard, for more housing and mixed-use projects. Overall, this is a very good housing project, and we look forward to bringing this BOSS Home product and these projects into your districts for permanent supportive housing, market-rate housing, affordable housing, all different types of housing. So thank you for your time and consideration.
That is the end of this. Are we going to public first?
Yes, Mayor, we have.
Yeah, we have 20 public speakers. We'll hear them first, and then we'll have the council engage.
Okay. If we can line up in the aisle so that we can expeditiously get through this list. We have Michael Bevins, Dahlia and Daniel Savala.
Hello, council, mayor and council. I was just at your groundbreaking for the Monarch facility downtown. And I'm like, hey, why would that be cool if that was outside or just downtown? I'm like, oh, well, here it is. This is a yes-in-my-backyard. Please build this. You should have built this five years ago when the problem was a lot worse. Anybody who is opposed to this, I suppose you can be opposed to anything, but it's like an anchor in a mall. It's business. It's dollars coming in to Rio Linda Boulevard. From that, hopefully, somebody else can be developing something across the street or down the road. And maybe with city investment, we can improve Rio Linda Boulevard. It's kind of a fairly bad road. Yeah, so for, just to make it short, a lot of people in the talk, yes-in-my-backyard, build it. You should have built it five years ago. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Dahlia.
Hi, my name is Dahlia Ramírez Robles. I'm a resident of District 2. I strongly support applying for the Home Key program and moving forward with the Rio Linda Senior Housing Project. As a city, we should be doing everything possible to get residents off the streets and into safe and stable housing. And also, I love the idea of dignified housing. That's kind of beautiful and necessary. Besides the supportive services provided by the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Services, this project is ideally located, especially for the seniors it would serve. I'm a nerd about biking and walking, and I love that the residents would live right next to the Northern Sacramento Bike Trail, the protected path. And its street canopy offers clear wellness benefits, clear air, a sense of calm and a safe access to the outdoors. The bike path provides a sense of independence while promoting both physical and environmental health. Additionally, the nearby bus stop offers access to public transit, including a direct route to the Arden Del Paso Station, just a few miles away. Even if the city has not awarded the Home Key funding, I support pursuing the funding source to make a project like this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. After Daniel, we will have Gordon, Lou, Timothy Smith and Mary Tappel.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Daniel Savala. I'm a District 2 resident, and I'm also a member of the Sacramento's Housing Task Force or Housing Advisory Committee. And hats off to planning staff over the years. As I came here a few weeks ago, I said, they've been doing tremendous work with long-range and short-range planning. Mayor, the work you've done in the legislature over the years has led us up to an actual project that delivers housing, not sheltered housing, not a pop-up tent, but real housing with its own lots and everything. We're finally here. As a pro-housing city, we should absolutely vote yesterday to move forward with the solution. There's a lot I could say, but I think the most powerful thing I can leave you with today is I remind you of a woman who had the name of Christina Hernandez, who's a longtime District 2 resident. She had a nice little apartment right on the corner of Fairfield and Arden Way. She paid at the time $700 a month for that apartment. She was on a fixed income with less than $900 a month. The rest, she had some SNAP benefits. And I got to know Christina while she was a volunteer on my school board campaign and some of the things she would, you just see your neighbor in the street. And the last time I saw Christina Hazard, she was digging through the trash can on Del Paso in front of the hammies, and I found out she was homeless. If that name rings a bell, you'll know that Christina Hazard ultimately ended up in the railroad shelter in the city of Sacramento and ultimately died. Damn. So if you're okay with that, then by all means, don't support this project. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next three speakers, if you could please line up. Gordon is next. Then we have Timothy Smith and then Mary.
Gordon Lou. I'm a District 2 resident. This whole, this project, District 2, we're always the one first. I mean, we are, I mean, I know we need housing. I'm just saying, but, you know, we are always the guinea pig. We are always first for everything. We have tons of homeless services in the area, but we always have to be first. The impacts to the neighborhood, that area is so, people struggle with just daily stuff around there, and then we're going to add some more things like this to that area. And then there's always perception. Nobody wants to be doing anything around that area or in District 2, because it's just always, it's dangerous. I always hear that. Del Paso Boulevard, I mean, Daniel's up here, and we're looking at, the P bid is horrible. So, I mean, we have, and then the YIMBY-NIMBY stuff, sure. I mean, you know, if we have more, if you're a homeowner, you're always going to be a NIMBY. I mean, that's just how it is. That's your investment. Whether it's $100,000 house or like a million-dollar house, people, they work hard for their, for their house. So, and then the cities, the last thing I want to say is really the city, you know, it's always, we, it's always, they say one thing and something else pops up. It's always the bait-and-switch thing. I mean, everything sounds great, but the follow-up is going to be the hardest part. We just need to follow up all the time, and it's just going to be another thing for the residents and all the people that live around the area, not just in that neighborhood, but all of District 2 that we have to watch. Like, it's going to be on our mind always, like, if you're involved, it's just something that is probably going to affect more of the people that live around there. But, you know, so it's just another burden on the whole District 2. And the equity is, I don't know, a buzzword. So we'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Timothy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to see you all again. My name's Tim Smith. I'm a resident of District 2. And I'm here today to ask you, ask for your support in this item. As you've already heard, there are detractors. And for a lot of different reasons, there's a lot of distrust in District 2, and some of it's valid, to be fair. But this project is generally consistent with the city's overall housing goals. As the developer mentioned earlier, it will take what are essentially three brown fields, put them together, and make, turn them into useful habitable property. And perhaps most importantly, what it will, it will do is it will create sustainable, affordable housing in an area that critically lacks supportive housing right now. And an area in which we have the highest poverty rates of any district in the city. An area in which 60% of the, of the 45%, oh, excuse me, of the 54% of people who rent in the district, 60% of them are paying currently over 30% of their monthly incomes on rent. Further, of that number, I think it's 20, no, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's 33% are spending upwards of 60% of their income, are spending over 50% of their incomes on rent every month. It's unsustainable. We need projects like this. We do need housing. I understand that it's going to anger some people, but unfortunately, I think we're going to have to break the odds. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Mary. If the next three speakers, after Mary could line up, Nancy Azavado, Pastor Walton and Varun.
I'm Mary Tappel, also a resident of District 2, and I'm one of the many of the citizens who helped with our police department, our park safety rangers and others. A whole lot of city staff help, a whole lot of help from, from the county, from the work crews, the sheriff's expert crew in particular for doing the mowing and, and the weed whacking. We finally got back after years of effort, our Sacramento Northern Bike Trail, which this proposed development will back onto. And a lot of the abuse that we had had was around the, the worst of it, including the homicides, both in the year 2023 and the year 2024, happened just outside Camp Resolution. And it was those hangers-on, whereas it was proposed that the, it would only be 50 senior women in Camp Resolution, and they wouldn't be, you know, camping in tents or on the open contaminated ground. They would only be in these trailer vehicles and only on the asphalt. That was all a baloney. It turned out 85 people, awful lot of them, didn't fit the description. And the hangers-on were violent, and even when the city had a bigger budget than it does now, doesn't have, didn't have that huge budget deficit we're now facing with. I understand it's structural. It's going to be worse next year. We cannot afford to have to reclaim our bike trail again. You won't have this kind of housing without the hangers-on coming on. And even if there's a camera that shows the feed, we have not been able to get response to, to cleaning up the Sacramento River Bike, the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail before. And we cannot expect that with a huge city deficit. People are trying to move back onto that bike trail, people with the substance abuse problems and the mental illness problems. And that's unfortunately whose, whose priority for Home Key Plus, too, is people of that same emotionally impacted state.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Nancy.
Hello, City Council. My name is Nancy Azavado. I'm from District 2. I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I'm here again to voice my concerns regarding the proposed 100-unit homeless housing complex along the Northern Bike Trail on Rio Linda Boulevard. While I understand the importance of addressing homelessness in our city, this location is simply not the right fit, in my opinion. Over the years, we've seen firsthand the impact of homelessness on this bike trail. We've dealt with significant issues from safety concerns to increased vandalism and destruction of public property. Our community members, including cyclists, joggers, families who use this bike trail, have already been dealing with the disruptions. Adding another 100 units, another 100-unit complex to this area would exacerbate these problems, especially with the proposed cuts of the staff and the already existing facilities right now. This location, while perhaps being, well-meaning in intent, is too large and too close to a space that should be accessible to all residents. It's not just the numbers. It's about the particulars of maintaining such a large facility in an area that has already struggled. With these challenges, a project of this scale would be a strain on local resources and likely diminish the quality of life for everyone in the area, both of the residents living in the proposed complex and the broader community that has worked hard to maintain the integrity of the bike trail. We understand that finding solutions to homelessness is difficult, but we urge the council to consider alternative locations that won't create further strain on our neighborhoods. We, we need a solution that is more suited to the needs of both homeless population and the broader existing neighborhoods of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm probably going to be the shortest talker here. All I would say is that District 2, just spread it out to everybody. Hard for the homeless, hard for my community, love them. I just say, spread it out for everybody, and I'm going to support whatever goes down.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Varun. And then after Varun, we'll have Aaron Thompson, Sherry Martinez and Ben, if you could line up in the aisle, please.
You know, I don't live in downtown or midtown like some of your city staff. I live north of the river, and these are some of my neighbors, and the situation affects me. I'm extremely bothered by the mess that brings us here, thanks to these developers, people who don't even live in our neighborhoods. How dare you? I'm pissed, and I want to say out loud that nobody got the balls to say. When I think about the situation, I think about filth. I think crime. I think dirt. I think getting high. I think needles. I wonder why our neighborhoods, why not other neighborhoods? Filth. How filthy and selfish have we become that we are trying to get in the way of a state program that looks after our most vulnerable population? It's a crime. It's a crime that we let, let them suffer in the bitter cold and heat and can't even shelter them from the elements when we are so drowned in our gluttony. Dirt. We're merely rankers of this dirt that our mother earth gives us. We don't have any right to deny other people's access to this dirt. I think getting high. When they go low, we go high. I think needles. This opportunity to bring low-cost dignity to our people on the streets, I think this is a needle in a haystack opportunity that these developers have found. I wonder why only District 2? Why shouldn't we try and find more sources of funding to get this in every district in our city? So developers, listen to me. If you don't like what I'm saying, meet me outside. I want to give you fist bumps and hugs and thank you and take you out for a meal to help use capitalism to make my city better. So thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your comment.
Do I start? Okay. Hi. So I don't want to start off on kind of a catty note, but I'm hearing a lot of these NIMBY types talking about mental health as kind of a, a reason not to set, set these things up, right? Mental health issues. But I come here as a therapist, speaking emphatically, you know, in support of, of this measure here. I became a therapist because of the education that I was able to receive, right? Things like student loans, the, the support of my parents, the ability to have housing and libraries to study from, right? And this is an extremely positive privilege in my ability to help other people, right? People might see me as an upstanding citizen, upstanding member of society who's been able to support others, right? But the same is also true for those who are experiencing homelessness. I think what's difficult for me is I, I sit here and I hear a stereotype of homelessness, which is that people who are homeless are violent and are criminals and are taken away from the needs of people who are more deserving. I simply don't think that that's true. And the people that I've worked with, you know, I've, I've had telehealth therapy sessions with homeless, you know, like citizens in our, in cars and things like this. And it's, it's gut-wrenching because there are no programs in which they can better themselves. And if they, if there are programs, they have a difficult time accessing them, right? People who can't get jobs because they are unable to take, take a reliable shower. I mean, my voice is like this, not necessarily out of nervousness, but because I'm very impassioned about this. And so I would really ask to look at homeless people and look at people experiencing homelessness in a positive and rewarding light. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sherry. Is Sherry Martinez here? No? Okay. And Ben?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Ben Raidersdorf. I'm one of the co-presidents of House Sacramento. We are an all-volunteer grassroots pro-housing group, and we have about 400 members, several dozen of which live in District 2, only a couple of whom could be here today. But I'm, I'm here on all of it behalf to strongly support this project. Above all, this is a, this is a model that could help solve the housing crisis, not just in Sacramento, but across the state. I know many of you have, pay a lot of attention to affordable housing finance, and you will know that the numbers being proposed here are astronomical. They are astronomically low. In California, permanent supportive housing projects now generally range over $1 million per unit. What they're looking at here is a third or less than that. Right now, unless we find ways to drive costs of housing projects like this down, we are looking at spending the entire city's budget for many, many, many years and then not really solving the problem. But also, I, I do want to say, just on a personal note, I do, I, I hear some of the concerns from neighbors, and I sympathize. I live in District 4. I live in Mansion Flats, which is the greatest concentration of homeless shelters and affordable housing in the city. District 4 actually has, I think, almost three times as much shelters and affordable housing as other districts, followed, I think, by District 6. housing as other districts, followed, I think, by District Six. But the reality is, you know, I live in a neighborhood with a lot of unsheltered homelessness, and the more shelters that get built, the better the problem gets. So while it's not really true that District Two receives the brunt of affordable housing, it does receive the brunt of unsheltered homelessness. And when people are forced to live on the streets, they are pushed into places like Del Paso Boulevard and the Great Northern Bike Way. I'm also here just very sympathetic. I'm a cyclist, I love the northern bike path, I ride there all the time. I really agree, we need to clean it up, we need to get people out of the bike path, into shelter. This project is a step to do it. My only complaint is that we have to find a way to scale this, we have to build this across the city and across the state. Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Sheri Kirk Lang, Jermaine Dinkins, and Marilyn Woods, if you could please line up. Okay.
Hello, Mayor and everybody and the council. I'm a resident of Del Paso, I said District Two. I think it's excellent, and I just want to thank the developers. I appreciate them. I was once homeless, I was once on drugs, I was once out there, and I wish I had something for me. But I survived it, I'm here now. I think it's excellent, we need it, Roger, we need a lift in our neighborhood community. I think we could do this. These are somebody's mothers, fathers, and children out there. They're not, like he said, they're not just drug addicts, they're somebody's family members, and they do not need to be overlooked. It does help when you clean up unhoused, makes our community much better, and I'm willing to fight to help it be better. So, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jermaine.
Hello, hello, hello. My name is Jermaine Dinkins. I've been a resident of District Two for 50 years, and I've lost a sister to homelessness, I lost a cousin to homelessness, and the thing that I think is really great to be able to put something back, and I understand the community's concern, right? But like, I was a part of the community who was taken from the community, so I get it. But at the same time, everybody on that bike trail is not a drug addict, is not a thief, is not a scum of the earth. Some of them just been deprived, you know what I mean? And I'm an individual who was deprived. And when I say deprived, I mean of understanding, of being able to reach, to really think of what I'm doing and why I need to respond. And some of them has been detached from that part of it, and the only way to help them is build something that's able to help them reattach, rewire themselves within life, you know, because we all fall short, you know, at least most of us do. I fell very short for 30 years. In the last 10 years, I've very much grown into something different, and that's why I'm standing in front of you today and asking you and saying to you, let's do something better in Sacramento than the whole United States is doing. Let's find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marilyn, and then the three speakers after Marilyn are Damond, Jonathan, Jonathan Cook, and Sonia Smith, if you can please line up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Marilyn Woods, and I am the CFO and co-founder of the Neighborhood Wellness Foundation, which operates out of District Two. We are here to support this project. We see it as an important addition to the work that we've been doing at the street level. We're a grassroots organization, and we've been working on the bike trail with the neighbors, trying to clean up and trying to provide accessibility for our neighbors to move into circumstances that are different than what they currently experience. The reality is, the fastest-growing population of homelessness are 55 and over. I mean, we will see more and more of our neighbors in that age category going homeless. Why? You have the restricted incomes, you have a rising cost, and you just have less availability. This presents a real opportunity to change and provide some dignity for the folks who are there, not because they want to be, but because of their circumstances, that's where they find themselves. So we, you know, we meet people where they are, we try to provide the bridge to allow them some continued dignity as they live out the rest of their life. In addition, we have to also consider the significant impact that will happen as a result of the HUD cuts that will manifest in some way. We know that that would put, that's going to put additional pressure on the housing stock and people's ability to access housing. So we will be a good neighbor with this group and work with them to make sure that whatever support we can provide to ensure that this particular project is successful and, you know, you don't see the trash. Putting them into, putting people into facilities will eliminate a lot of the challenges.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is complete.
Yes. I want to thank the council and thank the mayor for the opportunity to speak right now. I just want to start off by saying that I support this measure, and I respect the concerns of the opposers. But this is a real big situation that we have out here. We out there on the ground level. We're seeing people out there that's living below any standard of humanity. We treat, a lot of people treat our homeless as if they had disease or something, you know what I mean? A lot of people just run into hard times. A lot of people are at the age that this measure is going to be helping out. A lot of people have fixed incomes. Their rent is way higher than what their income is getting, so what are they really supposed to do? So now they out on the streets and they struggling, and then we look at them like, oh, wash our hands with them, and it's like, come on now, like, if we give them a little bit of help, put them in a situation like we're trying to do right here, and I think that it'd change a whole lot of perception, it'd change a whole lot of people's idea about homelessness. You know, I understand that it's a lot going on abad with homelessness, you know, like he was speaking about filth, you know, speaking about needles and all that stuff. But I'm going to tell you right now, if we don't do this or try to do something, it's going to be worse than that, that not, they don't have nowhere else to go. If we don't get them an alternative option, then what are they really going to do? You know, what do we expect them to do? You know what I mean? So I mean, we have to do something, and I understand that nothing is going to be 100% with everybody, somebody's going to be against it. Right now, we willing to go with the people that's against it, hope that you can deal with it, but we need to make this happen. This is serious, this is life and death. This is not just, oh, make a spot, oh, for them to go hang out, they're not trying to hang out, they hate being out there, a lot of them hate. Some of them, I'm not going to say everybody, some of them, you know, you choose to be where you are, but more than half of the people out there are really facing struggles and hard times, don't have family, don't have no support. What do you really expect them to really do? You know what I mean? So I'm just really asking and begging that my council, you could dig down into your humanity and into your heart and really, really try to help these people that really need help. At least try and see if they mess up before you just say, oh, it's not going to be good or it's going to be that bad. Thank you for your time.
Jonathan?
Good afternoon, Jonathan Cook. I'm the executive director of the Sacramento Housing Alliance in support of this project. This will deliver 100 units of permanent supportive housing, which we desperately need for seniors and veterans. And, you know, the voters of California passed Prop 1 in 2024, this is being able to leverage those state funds for Sacramento residents. And, you know, we're honored to work every day to be able to work with our member developers to include permanent supportive housing and projects across the city, and we're happy to support this one as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sonia, but after Sonia, we'll have Dr. Gina Warren, Teri Fowler, and Teresa McConnell.
Hi, my name is Sonia Smith. I'm with Neighborhood Wellness. My mother was a owner of her house in North SAC. This here, what I've seen on Norwood, the elderly, before it was raining, it was so full of our elderly people that the city had came out and they decided to get some of them out. But we're talking about 79-year-old people. We're going down the hills and up the hills of a levee. I mean, really, that's going to repeat itself if we really don't find a place to put people. And I enjoy working with the team that then came out and they then visited with us and walked up and down the levee to house people, because that's what it's going to take. It's going to take them coming out, working with somebody that knows our community and to make the changes. It just doesn't happen, because when they don't know somebody, we know somebody. So we're able to help them make that connection to get these people out of these tents and off the levee. So I think to have this project, because, that's not true, we're not the first one that had this project. You got it all down Broadway, they got a shelter, they done turned a whole clothes dump into a shelter off of Broadway, Stockton Boulevard. So I just think we need to follow suit, because the only thing I would disagree, if you bring a whole bunch of people out of our district and don't place our people first, because our district, with our people that's homeless, I think they deserve to be served first. Because if you're serving somebody else and bringing them into the community, I think that makes it harder for us to, with the concerns. So I think you should start with District Two to house.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is complete. Dr. Gina Warren?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. As the, one of the co-founders with Marilyn Woods and the CEO of Neighborhood Wellness Foundation, we are in support of the project, and I will tell you why, is what our staff has said, we have been in the trenches. And if we are going to look at the patterns of homelessness, we have to look at the mechanisms that created them. We have to understand how people got there. And I want to say, violence happens inside homes and not just out on the street. Drug abuse happens inside homes and not just out in the street. So we have to recognize that the value of what we are bringing here is an opportunity for our folks to be in homes. It is, as Marilyn has stated, the fastest-growing demographic of our homelessness is 55 and over. We have veterans who are also have the opportunity to be served, but I want to reiterate what Sonia just said. We are going to push hard, because we are in District Two, that our District Two unhoused seniors are placed first, that we have the priority. Otherwise, we're going to have the same challenges that we've had before, is that our unhoused people in District Two are going to stay unhoused. So we should have the opportunity to prioritize those who are staying there, and also to prioritize those who are working in the development of this project are also from District Two, because we know the people better than anybody out there, because we work with a street medicine team, we work with DCR, we are in the trenches, and we can connect the people, but not just connect them, is to help sustain the opportunity for them to live as we all would like to live. So I thank you guys, but we are still going to hold you guys accountable to making sure that our people are housed and that we are involved in this process. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teri Fowler.
The recent workshop on homelessness that approved proposals for micro-communities of 20, 30, and 40 tiny homes spread throughout the city, each with its own impact evaluation of spaces, locations, available services, and community input in order to integrate within the neighborhoods. Yet the proposal for 100 tiny homes for seniors with behavioral issues in District Two was not included. No reports for either business or residential impact, community involvement concerning integration into the neighborhood or anything. District Two offers more outreach programs towards homeless than any other district. We also struggle with higher incidence in crime. As for available services, we're losing the last pharmacy within this district. Whether state or locally funded, District Two should be included in the same criteria that the council agreed was necessary to integrate into these neighborhoods with minimal negative impact. 100 tiny homes for those with behavioral issues without the same steps that the council is requiring for micro-communities, especially since this project is not just homeless, but those with behavioral issues, will make any problems that arise from not having, taking these steps and being subject to the same as the micro-communities ensures that the problems, any problems will be harder to resolve and lasting impacts on this neighborhood. So I'm in support of it, but I also think it should be included with the workshop that you guys had just a week or so ago.
Our last speaker is Teresa McConnell.
I'm not opposed to housing projects in D2. I actually have some, a friend that I've made that was camped at a site, that was a private site that they kept getting swept from, and now she's on the levee. I have a small business, and when I get extra work, I give it to her. So I am personally, I have a lot of compassion for the homeless, and I believe they do need some strong housing. My problem is, is I sat here last meeting and you guys had a workshop, I don't know how that was considered a workshop, that was more of a presentation of your homeless situation. At no time did the 100-unit project that's going to be put into D2 or proposed to put into D2 was part of that homeless. You guys discussed a lot of broad things. I know you focused on your micro-communities, but you discussed a whole rabbit. Nowhere in that vision of Sacramento with 20, 30, to 40 micro-communities, which I am completely in support of, did we talk about 100-unit condensed units with mentally, you know, some mental health issues? How that would impact anything? Them, not just the community, them too. That's a lot. I live on Realinda Boulevard, and I about a block, two blocks away from where this project is going to be, is the projected site. And daily, we're dealing, I work and live, but daily, we deal with encounters, with challenge, mentally challenged, which we cope with, you know, like whether the person needs help. I mean, we offer water at our driveway when it was hot. Like, homeless is part of us, we care for them deeply. But why isn't the vision for D2 the same as the vision you guys have for Sacramento with micro-communities? Why can't we put three micro-communities in D2 instead of one giant condensed 100-unit? I just think it's too much.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to start by asking Councilmember Dickinson to give us a little flavor on where we're at here today.
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, I have a number of questions and then some comments, and so if I may, Brian and maybe John can join you at the podium.
Before I ask a question, I want to first of all thank all who've come to express yourselves today, no matter how you feel about this, your comments and your participation are foundational to what we do in trying to make good public decisions. And for all those who aren't here but who have spoken to me or emailed me or otherwise communicated with me over the last few weeks, I'm appreciative of all those communications as well. I also wanted to say to those who didn't like the fact that we didn't talk about this two weeks ago, that's my fault, because I asked for this to be continued at that time to today in order to give community members more of a chance in the district to be acquainted with what's being proposed here, to understand it, to have longer conversations than two minutes at the podium. So I'm sorry that you were disappointed, we didn't discuss it then, but that's on me. With respect to questions, these aren't in a particular order, some of the things you have mentioned in your remarks, but I want to go back and cover a few of them and underscore them. Let's start with, they're not in a particular order, but the Good Neighbor Policy, John, which you displayed, that is still a work in progress, as I understand it, it is subject to comment and revision in communications interactions with community members, assuming the grant is applied for and received. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that is correct, and we would look to include the Good Neighbor Policy in our conditions of approval when we go through a proper planning process. So it's something that we want to commit to that would be legally binding through our planning process.
And that was the next question, that you are willing to include it as a condition of approval, so it could be enforced through code enforcement or other mechanisms that the city has.
It's a good sign that we can complete each other's sentences, but yes, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. There are a number of people, as you heard, I share this sentiment that those who become the beneficiaries of this housing should the beneficiaries of this housing should come from District Two. If we're going to do this, then we need to help people off the street in District Two. And I know there, there may be some, some legal elements that, that keep us, constrain us from making absolute commitments, but, and maybe, Brian, this is for you more than it is for John, can you, can you describe for us how we can prioritize, make sure that we are, we are housing people who are on the streets in District Two ultimately in this project?
So, we're working with our continuum of care, of course, because we are really pushing that this is D2 seniors and veteran seniors. So, I, I can tell you that, I will give you my promise of everything that I can possibly do, and, and this is not a cop-out, and this is not trying to change words, that we will get everybody that we can from District Two that meets the criteria. We are looking at seniors, we are looking at chronic homelessness seniors that are in the district, and, and I wanna start with our oldest, someone mentioned, you know, a 79-year-old. I know that we have in our HMIS system, we have an 82-year-old that's out in the street, and we will be working to find our seniors from District Two, and once we've exhausted that, which I know that we won't, because there's, you know, it, it sounds like a lot that it's 100, but it's only 100. We have, anybody that knows District Two knows, we have more than 100 seniors that need housing in that district. So, all but giving a guarantee, District Two will be where we're drawing our seniors from.
And, and to that, to that end, we, the city received the grant last year for the Street to Housing pilot, which has been, has been targeted at those who are homeless in District Two, and in fact, for people who were on the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail. Can you talk a little bit about how you have executed that grant to this, this point, to make sure that it is in fact, those who've been on the street in District Two that are the beneficiaries of the Street to Housing grant?
Sure.
Has, how many, at this point, do we have from the street housing? This week?
Like, there's across 30.
So, 30, so that, that was an encampment resolution grant, specific to District Two, we are in District Two in specific locations, and housing at this point, 30 individuals, I would say more than 30, because there are units of people. It's been taking people directly from the street into an apartment, case management, and not even heavy, heavy case management, because we're still, as we're, as we're building up the number of individuals we're putting in, we're building our case managers up as well. We didn't wanna hire all case managers from day one, because they would have one person to, to case manage. But even at that light touch, we've been successful. Again, I, I can't reiterate, and, and some people made the comments, if you can get somebody off the street, get them into a stable environment, they will stabilize a lot quicker than, than you think. And this is the opposite, I keep, I keep banging this drum, but, you know, leading, the homelessness has led to a lot of the behavioral health concerns that, that everybody is looking at. If you put anybody out in the street, anybody, any of us end up out in the street, it won't take us long before we start having some behavioral health issues. And if we can get people housed, we can stabilize a lot of this.
So, the, but the Street to Housing group pilot has used outreach teams in District Two to locate people there and hopefully move them into housing, some of whom have actually moved into housing outside District Two, if I understand it correctly, is that right?
There has been some housing that has been outside District.
A number of people have raised the age question, and have suggested that, you alluded to it a moment ago, that we look at people who are in the upper end of the elder scale as opposed to closer to 55. Can you, can you talk about that in a little bit in greater detail than you did a moment ago, in terms of implementation for potential residents in this, in this project?
Yeah, and so, you know, unfortunately for us, since we've been going through this HMIS and collecting data on everybody, we have some really good data on, to the point where we can really draw down on looking at age, looking at health conditions, looking at visits to emergency rooms, looking at, you know, income levels, history, income histories, looking at credit barriers, we know everything's there, and we have so much information that we can really drill down and, and, and find individuals that we're looking for to meet the criteria specifically for this housing project. With, you know, we always talk about the equity lens, I mean, this is, just going through our system, we're grabbing the equity lens of, of our homelessness, it's across the spectrum. And so, we're starting with our eldest and, and working down, and again, we have so much data that we can drill down in, that we, I'm, I'm confident we can find the, the demographic that we're looking for to house. The, the VA seniors, we work with a VA representative, we have an outreach worker that was with us today, in fact, and, and she comes and works with us, we have a lot of information from the VA on our VA's populations that's out there. So, we're, we're gonna be very, very diligent, specific on what we're looking for.
So, in short, we have the data and, and we have the tools to identify those who, who would be among the oldest of those on the streets and, and try to help them come into housing. Let's talk for a moment about security on the site. John, you, you spoke a little bit to this, and can you elaborate or, or just underscore what you said about, about security, both within the project, external to the project?
Yeah, I think any project that we own or manage, we, you know, have a certain pride of ownership, and we also have care for the residents that live there, they don't wanna see, you know, crime, drug activity, unsanctioned encampments outside the living facility or outside of the community, and so we would, you know, unlike this, I don't have a personal ownership stake in this, I'm doing this for a one-time developer fee, but that same, those same policies and security protocols, we want to embed in the good neighbor policy. And so, security, obviously, and the care for the residents, but also for the surrounding community is really important to the success of the development of the project, and so that's where the idea of committing to those specific things, the security items, working with 311, working with SACPD, is, you know, we wanted to make sure that was a policy that lasted for, throughout the life of the 55-year project life expectancy, yes.
And, and we have the technical feasibility, for example, to give real-time feeds to the police department for external activities?
Yeah, Axon makes this product, they make the body cameras, and they make another product called Fusus, F-U-S-U-S, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with it, it's a really simple off-the-shelf product that you put in your tech room and your development, and it connects the live feed, so if there's a call for service, an emergency call, SACPD can get real-time situational awareness of not just that facility, but also officers in the area, cuz Axon pipes all the data into the SACPD dispatch center, yes.
So, it's a very practical question. People might say, well, that's fine that you're describing this, but what happens when the camera fails?
Oh, yeah.
Who's gonna go out and fix that camera? Who's gonna make sure that they're kept in good repair, that they are constantly operative?
Great question, cuz that, let's expand that beyond just the camera, but also, let's say, the buildings themselves, the gate, the walls. Every month, you collect income from the projects, you're setting aside reserves, reserve accounts for repairs and critical repairs, and you know, every, everything has a useful life, and once something extends, reaches that end of that useful life, we have reserves to dip into to make those types of repairs. And so, you notice one day that you show up and the camera's not working, it's something that you can order a new camera, they cost, you know, a couple hundred bucks, replace it, and then you have your eyes back. Yeah, and that, that extends to any capital item on the project, HVAC units, water heaters, those types of things, yeah.
So, that, that is an operational detail that you, that you have faced and addressed in the past.
Yeah, and in this case, we are, so normally, we carry like a $250 reserve per year, per unit, which sounds low, but that's actually pretty average for a multifamily project that has, you know, higher cost to replace, you know, it's just a higher-cost product. This, we actually believe have $500 per unit, so we've doubled that. And so, we're actually, you know, wanna make sure that we have adequate reserves to make sure that everything looks spic and span for the next 55 years, yes.
And, and that, that is actually a good segue to the services that will be provided for the rest, maybe this is back to Brian. I think the staff report, you indicate, your presentation indicated about eight and a half million dollars dedicated toward services over, I thought you said 15 years, I may have had the number wrong, correct me if that, if, if that was wrong. That is money included in this grant application, is that right?
Right, so, that is the, the matching funds, the 1.5 matching funds, and then it's also going to be the contract for services that we have provided. And one of the ways that we're able to, to provide the services and cost this out, is that there's a lot of services that we already have in the system, and we have access to, and we can simply refer to and get that service there. The, the permanent supportive housing services that are in the plan, I'll, I'll quickly run through. We have case management, we have peer support activities, mental health, substance use services, behavioral health services, physical health services, assisting, obtaining benefits and essential documents, education and employment services, veteran-specific supportive services, supportive services for people with co-occurring conditions, recreational and social activities, potential outplacement for higher levels of care, and there's financial counseling, education, DV support. We have a myriad of services that we've created over the years of us tackling homelessness, and everybody has been so busy creating all of their services and, and being, for lack of a better term, in their silos of their service, that we're now actually able to grab all those services and start pulling them in and using them, so we're not duplicating services that we're paying for something that's already out there. And so, there is internal services that we're providing, and we are also reaching out to any services that's available.
Case management would be onsite?
Correct.
Are any of the other services that you listed onsite, or are they all, all referral? And if they're referral, how quickly can someone, especially if they have some sort of behavioral episode, get access to services?
Yeah, so, this, and I think this is a, I don't know, it's a little misconception, so, you know, we, we've been out to our other permanent supportive housing sites. So, the caseworkers that are there, they're, they're trained in de-escalation, they're trained in crisis management. So, the initial crisis, should it occur, the caseworkers can, can manage the initial Resource we have available, behavioral health can come out, we have, now we have a CWRT, Crisis Response Team, Wellness Response Team, we have the core centers that have behavioral health that we can call, we have 988, we have DCR, we have plenty of services that there's a misconception, I believe that, you know, that there's a crisis response needed every day. And as you will see from most of our, all of our permanent supportive housing projects, it's just not there. There, there are people just living like the rest of us, that may have a bad day and need somebody to talk to them. It's, it's not this place where everybody is on the verge of crisis and needs to be stabilized. It is people living, and if they need some support, the supports are available for them.
And in that vein, there have been those concerned about both the potential behavior of residents, and also those who might be attracted to the location but not be residents, and, and could cause disruption or, or other issues. So, let's, let's break those into the two categories. With respect to the, the residents, as I understand it, they, they are going to be subject to essentially good behavior requirements, like you would expect of, of any landlord-tenant relationship, is that true?
Correct. They're all, will be carrying a lease. John, do you wanna?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to answer that question about what the security looks like onsite, you asked that question, I was focused more offsite, but yes, you know, unfortunately, sometimes you have to evict people, because they violate the terms of their lease. All of these tenants, as Brian was mentioning, pay rent. You know, there's a variety of reasons that you could be evicted, obviously, after the right warnings and regulatory filings, it's not a process we like doing, but, you know, you have to mind, be mindful of the other residents and the community, so if you have disruptive behavior, that's not tolerated, and yes, there is a budget unfortunately for evictions, because that's a part of life. And yeah, that, this is no different in that regard from any of our other multifamily rental projects, we have the same, or very similar, you know, rental processes, or sorry, rules and processes for evictions and for people who break those rules.
Thanks. And then, do you have thoughts about the concern raised about those who aren't residents but might be attracted because of who the residents are?
Yes, and I look at, at that in, in the flip, right? I look at our security there and our gate and access control as to protect, protect our seniors that are inside the walls from potential, I mean, we see it in our world, the senior abuse, the, the seniors that are being tricked into, they're giving their, their paychecks to people because they need whatever. I look at it as protecting the, the population that's inside of our walls from anybody preying on them mostly, and then, again, we're controlling access to it. We want it to be a safe gated senior community that people can live in and, and enjoy.
And we want the neighborhood surrounding it to be safe just, just as much.
Of course, of course, and that's why we spend a lot of time in District Two, making sure that we keep the rest of the neighborhood as safe as we can.
John, back to you for, just to, to talk, well, maybe this is a Brian question too, we're indicating that, that the grant would support 100 units. That's a cap. Is it fair to say that that's a cap on the number of, of units that, that we would contemplate for this project?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're proposing, we're not going to exceed that. The, there are two kind of programmatic constraints that we're dealing with, one is the $200,000 per unit dollar match, and so that's why that 100, 100 units is kind of right in the sweet spot where, you know, our average cost per unit gets to right around $200,000, so it doesn't require a matching grant from the city or any other entity. And I lost my train of thought, what was I saying? My ADHD kills me every time. Yeah, and then the other commitment or cap is the $35 million, and so there's a sweet spot there, and on this site, the 100 units on the 2.4 acres is kind of the perfect density, it blends in well with the neighborhood predominantly, in the neighborhood there are single-family homes, and so we're looking at 100 detached housing units, certainly would not go above that, you know, and I don't think we would, you know, we're right, right in our sweet spot at 100, which is roughly about a dwelling units per acre of about 42. Some of the other home key projects that have been delivered have a density that's much greater. Furthermore, our units are really meant for singles, and you could potentially have like a couple, an elderly couple as well, it does have space for queen-size bed, but we assume they'll probably be about 100, maybe 105 residents, and so that's really not a terribly intensive development in terms of density. But yeah, that 100 cap is 100 for a variety of reasons and constraints that we won't be able to, I think, adjust.
I think that's important, because there certainly are, are community members who are concerned that that number grows.
Yeah.
And they're concerned enough, as you heard, they're concerned enough about 100, let alone, having that boosted. But speaking about the units and the, and the design, the, the design was still, the site plans still have to go through the planning department, still be subject to transportation and utilities and all of, all of those reviews to, to make sure that, that all the elements work and, and comply with the city's zoning and building code, correct?
Hundred percent, yes, and we look forward to working with the community to, again, maximize the aesthetics of this, to make sure that it fits into the neighborhood, that it's a positive, something that we can all be proud of, absolutely, yeah. it's a positive, something that we can all be proud of, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, those are the questions I, I have. Thank you both for responding to, to those. I apologize to anyone if I missed a concern that you, that you have. I tried to get to the major ones that, that I've, I've heard today and, and up till today. I want to take a moment to talk to my colleagues. So Brian, you, you're, you're relieved.
Thank you, sir.
In more ways than one, probably.
I want to tell you, I've struggled. I have seriously struggled with this application. And I've struggled because the district I represent has, in my estimation, and I believe the estimation of most of the residents of the district, far too long, suffered from neglect, a lack of attention, and a lack of resources. In our part of the city, too many people live with that reality every day. And so when people are here to speak to us and say that this project is not a good fit, it's not because they don't believe that we shouldn't be doing what we can to move our housed off the streets, that we shouldn't be doing as much as we can to meet the social, economic, and equity needs of every resident of the city. It's because they feel, they live, I think, with justification, with the belief that too often, it's been this part of the city that's been asked to accept the burden. And they want to see a change. I share that view with them deeply, and I am more than sympathetic to those today who've expressed their reservations and opposition, because they view it as just one more instance of the same old story. They want to see a change, they want to see a difference, they want to see an acknowledgement, a recognition by the city council and by the city staff and by the city as an entity, that there's a different attitude, a different approach, and a different commitment to bringing economic investment to their part of the city, to bringing the advantages and the public assets that they see in other parts of the city to their part of the city. And I share that. I am, I am so struck by the extent to which all of you at one time or another have indicated to me that you recognize and see what I'm describing, and that you are willing and prepared to accept the responsibility and the challenge to be part of that change. Part of that change, if we apply for this application, is that this is the project that goes into North Sacramento if we get the grant. It's not more microsites, it's not more homeless assistance, it's not more expansion of existing locations, it's this project. Because outside of District Four, it is District Two that by far has the most homeless assistance beds today. Now, if that were the extent of it, I would not support this project. But in the final analysis, we have to have more housing. There is no escaping that reality. We have to have it everywhere in this city, and we need everyone to be part of that solution. And that's what I'm asking all of you to commit to today, be part of that solution. Do not look at one part of the city, or two parts of the city only, as the places where it's okay to put those things that people don't want in their neighborhoods. It's got to be everywhere, everyone has to be part of the solution. And today, today, thank you, scattered applause, today, I accept that we in District Two will continue to do more than our fair share as part of the solution. But it's with the recognition and the understanding that the council also makes that fundamental commitment to the entirety of the city and especially those places that have been left behind all too often and overlooked far too frequently. So I'm going to support this, and I will move the staff recommendations, Mayor, to apply for this grant. I ask that the last section of the resolution be dropped, which the staff has acquiesced to it, and I appreciate that, so that as we see, if we get the grant, this project move forward, we in good faith know we're engaging the community in those issues that we've talked about that will form the ultimate shape and nature and conduct of this project. We need more housing, but we also need equity. We need a shared commitment, and we need to make sure that everyone in our city benefits as we do the, all those things. Thanks.
Well, first, I, I want to take this moment to thank Councilmember Dickinson first for his questions and his thoughtfulness and his advocacy for his district, and his call to action for all of our districts to step up. I know that there are many residents from District Two here, and I just want you to all know that you have a champion in your district that's fighting for you day in and day out, and so, and it's absolutely hard to follow Councilmember Dickinson, and I'm just proud to be serving alongside him. I will second the motion on the table, but definitely have some comments and some questions for both John and Brian as well. I too also want to take this moment just to thank all the residents who came today on both sides. I just want to say thank you because I think it's so important for you to stay engaged. I believe you make us better public servant, and you also force us as electeds to reimagine all the possibilities. And so, thank you for being here today, thank you for sharing insight and just voicing your love for your neighborhoods. I also want to thank Brian and DCR team for bringing this project forward for consideration. And I think all of us have said this over and over on the die, is that the top issue in our city is homelessness, it's poverty, it's the lack of housing in this city. And so, I also just want to share that there is a very similar proposal, not just in District Two, but coming to District Five and Eight as well next week, right? And so, it is after D Two, D Five and D Eight stepping up, right? And so, I just wanted to name that as well, and that I hear Councilmember Dickinson's call to action for the entire mayor and council to step up. And I agree with residents that this needs to be scaled up in every district. I support more supportive housing, more permanent supportive housing, in particular, senior housing, because we know they're an incredibly vulnerable community. We got to make sure there's those wraparound services, I think that's the key piece that's critical for me, and I, I really believe that, that this project can help reintegrate our, our seniors into the community and really help reduce social, social isolation. I also just wanted to note while that this project is mainly for seniors, which is great, I just want to acknowledge, I know in my district in particular, I can't speak for District Two, but that even though it's senior housing, most often than not, many of our families who are seniors live in intergenerational households. And so I just want to name that and for us to be cognizant of that in terms of services, because we just never know, there could be babies and generations living in these households even though we're targeting seniors, so I wanted to name that. So, a few questions, only because, I'm going to use this moment because, you know, South Sacramento is considering this next week as well. So, first, a couple of questions to Brian and then to John, and very similar to Roger, Councilmember Dickinson as well, but I want to dive in a little bit deeper. So, a lot of these Home Key projects has been, the oversight has been under SHRA, and I've noticed seeing this trend that the city is applying, and now we're taking on the oversight. And so my question to you, Brian, is that do we as a city, even with our shortfall in our budget, because that's next on the agenda at 5:00 PM, do we have capacity, DCR and the city, and the city to, to have, to, to be the oversight, right? And so that's my first question, is do we have the capacity to do that? Because I think that's, that's really important, we're applying for the funding, we're going to do this development, but do we as a city, as an oversight, have the capacity to do this?
Well, I can tell you that my staff needs sleep right now because the application process is extensive on this. We stepped forward on these projects in particular because there was, like I said, funding left on the table, and for Sacramento to not, with the, our homeless, the account that we have in our city, for us not to apply is unfathomable. And so we dug in and worked a lot of extra hours to get the application. The buildout itself, that's on John. John has to spend his time building it. We will spend the time finding the individuals for these sites, and then we will spend the time, much like we do with all of our, our shelters, is providing service and contracting services. So it's not a, you know, other than the initial application process and getting our ducks in a row, and our output here is the matching funding, which in this case we used HAP, one and a half million, it's, it's well worth it for us to spend a million and a half to get 100 people housed with, with services for the next 15 years. To answer your question directly, I, I think we have the capacity.
Okay.
It will be supported with DCR staff, but there's still a lot of it that will be contracted. And as I said, there is a lot of services that we have in the city that we can use, and we just aren't using them efficiently to call from those services and bring them in. And so it's really a matter of organizing and, and getting more efficient with the use of our sources, that we have multiple sources to provide the services.
Yeah, no, Brian, I, I appreciate you sharing the insight on that, and I guess I ask on the capacity because you're absolutely right, we don't want to leave money on the table, right? And I think it's great that we're applying for this, we need more housing. I just want us as, you know, as the policymakers to be cognizant of, that if we take on this project, when we take on this project, to be mindful that there could be more resources needed for DCR, because you just said right now that staff is exhausted, right? And so I just want to name that, and I think it's just important. And even if there are lots of services out there that's in silo, someone still has to do the coordination. That means we still need staff to do that piece. And so I just want to name that and, and, and call that as we're moving this project forward, that we need to consider this as an, as a budget item as we're, we're expanding, right? And so I want to share that. Councilmember Dickinson asked this, but I just want this on record again, because I'm going to ask this next week when you bring forth and one for South Sacramento, is that can you guarantee that residents in District Two, unhoused residents in District Two will have first choice in the, in the slots for the permanent supportive housing? Will you guarantee that?
As, as much as I can guarantee it within the, the legal boundaries of us using coordinated entry, I, I think that we are writing the projects as tight as we can to look at the immediate population, work out from where the sites are to, you know, to grab our individuals that are in the most need and, and close to the, to build out. I don't know if Lisa's here, I might be talking out of turn, but I will pull as much weight to make sure that we are pulling people from the districts that I can, and we have already had conversations with the coordinated entry and COC to work on the, they're working with us to make sure that we are working within the districts.
Okay, that's great. The other question and concern I have, and then I'll go to John, is that, you know, we've learned from other communities, particular, particularly in District Eight, that when you don't have the onsite services, many of our seniors and our families actually fall through the cracks. And so, really great to hear that there's going to be the onsite services. I give an example of formerly G Parkway, right? It is now the beautiful Phoenix Park, but that took Ms. Jackie, trusted community messengers, SHRA, and so many partners to turn that neighborhood around. And I just want to just suggest that as we move forward on this, you had mentioned that the city will act as the lead service provider for an RFP, and I would suggest that it would be really important that, you know, we seek out trusted partners, like the Wellness Foundation that was actually here today, because the community trusts them, they've been on the ground, and so as we're considering community-based organization and folks who are going to be seeking out these RFP, it's so important that it's not just like CBOs from like other cities, or, you know, it's got to be people that we trust, it's got to be people that the residents trust in order to do this work. So I just wanted to, to name that. John, you're next. I heard that maintenance is covered in the construction, did I hear that correctly?
No, that, it's in the operating budget, so there's a, an operating expense line item and kind of forecast we provide for 20 years. We don't have a capitalized operating reserve on this account, I mean, there are reserves built in, but it's, it's not part of the $20 million request that we're requesting from Home Key, it's part of the $8 million kind of operational service request, and it's baked into our operational budget every year.
Okay, and then you just mentioned when Roger, Councilmember Dickinson asked about reserves set aside, you said 250 per unit, is that different from the maintenance?
No, that, so that 250 per unit is kind of a standard for our multifamily projects, like apartment buildings, for this tiny home community, we're, we're doubling that for a product that probably doesn't need it. What we're doing is we're building in a lot of contingency into the maintenance reserves through, you know, as we collect rent, as we get, you know, the revenue from vouchers, as we get revenue from HAP and the Home Key operational funds, there's a certain amount of money, which is, I believe, $500 per unit per year, that's set aside in an interest-bearing account that is used and dipped into when you need to, to make repairs and things like that.
Okay, that's really great. I think, yeah, setting aside, making sure that we, it's great to hear that, that's already in the operating budget, because oftentimes we hear from community that, you know, the developer comes in, they do their thing, they drop in, parachute in, build it, and they're gone, right? And so the maintenance upkeep is of utmost importance, so I really appreciate that. The other question I have is, who built these homes?
Yeah.
And how much are they actually getting to build these homes? So I think it's, I want to ask that question in full transparency, because as we're scaling up and we're doing this, not just in the city, but I know other cities are beginning to be interested, and we're going to be leading the way, I want to know how much does it cost, like who's building these homes and how much are they getting out of profit?
Yeah, so the, the, there's two phases of construction, this type of construction project. You have your site work phase where you're putting in your utilities, your roadways, your foundation, the pads that the housing units sit on. The actual manufacturing of the units themselves, they come manufactured out of the factory and are put on trucks from LA, and so they're manufactured in LA at a big warehouse facility by a company that manufactures a lot of like pre-manufactured sheds or Home Depot, that's the parent company of Boss Homes, that's their primary business line. So, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the wages and, and working conditions in LA are really, really, it's a really well-run company. I think they have really happy, really great employees, and they build them onsite, put them on a, on a truck, and then that truck comes to Sacramento, and our general contractor brings them off.
A number?
So it's, yeah, it's like $70,000 a unit for the actual homes, and then the site work and infrastructure is about $60,000 a unit, right? So if you multiply that by 100, it's about, we're spending about $6 million onsite work and improvement, and $7 million to pay for the materials and the labor to build the house, build the homes and then truck them up here.
Okay, so as a developer, how much do you take home?
So our developer fee on this is $1.2 million, so that's, I think it's like half of what we're allowed to charge. So, yeah, I mean, I think there's a project that the county proposed here, there's a Home Key project, the developer's making two and a half million for a hotel conversion, so we're making less than half of that, and we're a for-profit company, but I guess we're not charging enough or something, but I'm just kidding.
No, I think, yeah, no, thanks, Sean, I appreciate that. I asked those questions just full transparency, because I think it's important for the public to know the numbers of how much housing actually costs to build, and so that we have that breakdown, so I really appreciate that.
Of course.
I'm just going to mention one more thing, I know I'm, I thought I was going to be quicker than, quicker, but I'm a little bit, one more thing, and it's about good neighbor policy. And John, you had mentioned this, and this is really just to my colleagues, I just want to bring this up, and that, you know, we've heard from so many of our residents, when I think about the Metta View Shelter in particular, and when there are projects that come in, we have a good neighbor policy, but I just want to mention that it, a good neighbor policy is only good if we actually enforce it, and I want to name that because that's not happening at X Street, right? That is not happening at all. And so, when that doesn't happen, there is a, a growing mistrust from community, right? And so, I, I think it's just really important that as a city, we hold ourselves accountable, that if we're going to have a good neighbor policy... that if we're going to have a good neighbor policy, that we hold ourselves to that. And then lastly, I just want to say, the research shows that, we know that when people are living on the street, they have a shorter lifespan. So we got to do everything we can to get people inside, to ensure there is a place for them to rest and to have dignified living. And so because of that, you know, I'm going to support this application and support Councilmember Dickinson and his call that it's not only in his district, but that every district steps up. So thank you so much for bringing this application forward. Thanks, Mayor.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you. And I'll keep my comments brief, because many of them have already been touched on. So I just really want to start by thanking Councilmember Dickinson for, I think you do such a great job at really expressing what the issues are, what you're hearing from the community and then making that call to action to us and really helped me understand the position that you're in, which is, and your community members. I, you know, I think when I heard folks come up from all sides and positions, what I heard was a lot of pain and mistrust and a lot of years of feeling like they have not been invested in their community, hasn't been invested in. And so I see that and I do hear that. And I do not see people who do not want to welcome folks into their community. In fact, I see a lot of people who already have done that tenfold over what has happened in some other parts of the city. And so I just want you to know that we see you, we see that. We know that District Two does bear a lot of the burden and the pain. And my hope is that as we continue to do projects like this all over the city, hopefully, that we create more avenues for people to get off the streets and into actual homes. Because I do think that that is the outcome that we all want and it's certainly what I want. I, one of the things that I, I'm not sure if I heard you say it directly yet, it may have been said, but around the urgency of this, the reason why we're moving this forward kind of quickly is because there's money on the table and in order for us to access that money that's there for this project and for another project that we'll talk about next week, we need to move quickly and identify those sites, is that right?
Yes. The application deadline is the 29th of this month and, yes.
And if we don't do that, that money goes away. And I don't, again, I don't know if this was said, it might have been, but the fear around that is if we do not propose potential sites and locations for this money to be used, that then the state might say, hey, they didn't, they didn't put applications in last year around, so we're going to actually go over here to maybe this other jurisdiction and give them, give them the opportunity, because Sacramento didn't want to do it last time, something like that.
Yes.
Okay. And that makes a lot of sense to me, you know, having previously worked in the state legislature and understanding how it works in there, I think that's a very real fear and possibility. And I think we do, it's, I know I've said this many times, I never want any, ever leave money on the table, especially for something that's important. And so I appreciate that you and your staff and the entire city team for moving quickly and for trying, thinking creatively about how to do this and do this in an affordable way. This hasn't really been mentioned as much, but I want to bring it up because District Two and District Five share a lot of similarities. And one of the similarities is empty space in terms of empty lots with chain link fences around them. And a lot of times they're privately held, they're not necessarily like government owned, but some of them are. And what I know, based on my experience, is that those empty lots, sometimes for decades and decades and decades, they attract a lot of things that people don't want. Crime and illegal dumping and people using all sorts of substances and you name it, if there's an empty lot there, we have certainly gotten a call about it. And I know that, I'm sure a lot of people can resonate with that if you live next to lots. So I'm constantly thinking of ways that we can get creative and improve our lot situation. And this is one way of doing that, right? And I know there's some fear around that, but having permanent supportive housing means that you're activating a space. We know that when we activate spaces, we reduce the other issues that come along with empty spaces. You have more people, more eyes on the space, security, all the things that might come along with that. And so I think there are some very sincere fears, but also I think there's a lot of possibility in this, some really good possibility of creating community and having a space that sounds like a community garden, a dog park. When I heard dog park, I was so excited because we actually don't have a single dog park in District Five. And so I was like, that's awesome. And so I think there's a lot of, a great possibility for that. And the rent burden, so a lot of this has already been touched on, so I'm not going to keep talking about it, but I just really want to hit home, like this is housing. It's, as we, all of the spaces that we're in where we talk about homelessness, the elephant in the room is always that we don't have enough housing for folks. We can create temporary shelters, but people just cycle in and out of them because we don't have a permanent place for them to go. And that's not just a problem in Sacramento, it's a problem in a lot of other urban centers in the United States and California on the coasts. And so, you know, I think creating opportunities to do projects where we're doing like 100 units at a time, that can be scary, but it can also be, it's really exciting for me because I'm like, oh, that's 100 more places where we can take someone who's currently living on the streets and hopefully get them into a better situation, get them stabilized. And maybe they even end up in another unit somewhere else and that unit opens up for someone else to get off the streets. And so to me, that's a perfect scenario. And then, you know, just again, on the seniors, seniors and veterans, this is one of the things that really gets me whenever I look at the data on homelessness in Sacramento County, is we know that the, one of the fastest growing populations that we're seeing on our streets are seniors. And that breaks my heart, because I think that a measure of a nation and of a place is how you treat your seniors, how you treat your young people, treat people who are disabled. And right now, I think we're not doing a great job as it relates to people who are on a fixed income and just trying to survive and they've, you know, probably done their time and worked in their careers for years and maybe just fell on hard times or didn't have the family support that they needed. And so I'm really excited at the possibility of creating more spaces for them. And then lastly, as Councilmember Wang mentioned, that we're going to be talking next week about a project in District Five. I'm really, again, excited. I think there's a lot of great questions that were asked, both by Councilmember Dickinson and Councilmember Wang, that will apply to that one as well. But, you know, I think there is a lot of, you know, a lot of the burden is being spread around and I hope that we see more of these projects. I really hope that we're successful in these applications, because again, these are applications. So, you know, all this, all, much to do and it could be for naught, but I hope that it isn't. And I hope that it's an example that we can set for not just ourselves, but others in the state. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Okay. I only have one question, but it's the same question that Councilmember Dickinson and Councilmember Wang had. But I have experience with having shelters and not having the appropriate placement of people inside the shelters after we promise one thing and then changing formulas. So with this situation, DCR, is it going to be in the city-county partnership agreement in terms of placement of people or is it just going to be city?
I'm not sure I understand.
So like, it's going to go into HMIS, is SAC steps forward, going to place the people that are going to be at, it's permanent supportive housing.
So that's why, okay, so normally permanent supportive housing runs through the coordinated entry system.
Yes.
With this, we're talking about us finding people in the area from the districts to place in there. And that is pushing the envelope of working with SAC step forward and a coordinated entry system to put the pressure of letting us go through our system and, oh, Lisa's here, perfect. Lisa, do you want to come up and speak a little more on this?
Yeah, that'd be great. Like if we're, we're going to be using HMIS to identify the people, there's going to be a caseworker and then that caseworker would be identifying those people to be able to use this housing?
Well, let me start with, I'm not entirely sure on this application if 100% of the individuals are going through coordinated entry. Some of the Home Key projects do not have 100% going through coordinated entry. But let's assume they are required to go through coordinated entry. There are HUD requirements about how you operate a coordinated entry system. It's not our decision necessarily, it's what HUD is saying we have to do in order to operate a coordinated entry system. And what that generally means is that they look at the entire COC territory. So that is the entire county, it is not just the city of Sacramento. They expect that we are prioritizing people based on their most vulnerable aspects and that you then place people into the appropriate situations based on their needs. So you're trying to find a solution for everyone, permanent supportive housing means your most vulnerable need to be prioritized for those, for that housing. That being said, you have some conditions for this project. You want them to be veterans, you want them to be seniors, so that's already limiting, you know, who is, has access. They also have to have perceived or real behavioral health needs, as I understand it. So you're looking at a behavioral health component to it. I believe what Brian is indicating or trying to signal to you is that the more that they can tee up people within the community through their outreach and their engagement and keeping them ready and doc-ready to be able to be able to access the housing, the more likely that the people that they're working with will rise to the top to be selected in the coordinated entry process.
Okay, thank you.
And to add to that, we DCR staff out there, working hard and heavy and fast on getting who we want in these.
Thank you. Councilmember Wang.
Thank you very much, Mayor. One, I, Mayor and Councilmember Dickinson for the focus on this item here. First, let me, let me just talk to our community residents, speak with our neighborhood here. And I completely appreciate the concerns that people have. And when I think about, you know, the communities in my district that live near warehouse areas and it always feels like things are putting on into that district, it bothers us and it worries us because most of us have spent the very little bit we have to purchase a home, all of our assets, and we fear that that would be devalued. And I think we need to respect that, we need to respect that concern that, that there's been a lot, a lot done to build, you know, the little piece of the American pie that we have. So one, I want to completely recognize that concern and fear. I also want to say that you have my commitment as a councilman to be focused on that, that development and that uplifting of District Two. And, and the first Home Key project was actually a new creative project by St. John, St. John Square, that's been extremely successful, extremely successful. And it was out of the box thinking, we did it just like this at the end of the night. And the women and children that have gone through that project have already now, some of them have ended up with state jobs and employment with retirement and health benefits. And, you know, the fact that it was a project like this, it was, was amazing. So, one, I'm inspired by the optimism, the creativity. I also know that it means that it's consistent engagement. And just know that for those that live in District Two who are here today with concerns, you know, we need to make sure that everybody does their part. In District Six, we just opened up 175 managed small modular homes in my district, directly across the street from the commercial property where my kid goes to his youth academy every, every weekend. And it's the security, the making sure that we have behavioral counseling, all those pieces that were identified that will make it a success. And the fact that we're focusing on seniors who we know may never have an opportunity to enter back into the workforce and build themselves up, you know, then this is, this is, I believe, a well-worthy cause and endeavor to do so. And one, again, to start where I started, to end where I started, I acknowledge the concerns and the, all of this must lead to the uplifting of District Two by addressing the challenges that we have and making sure that we take care of our seniors. So I'll be supporting it, but just know that I've been very happy about how the Home Key project in my district has fared and I, and I expect that same level of outcome, you know, by vigilance in District Two as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just want to, first of all, address this issue, but address Councilmember Dickinson. So first, Councilmember Dickinson, there are only two people that represent District Two, and that's me and you. And you have my commitment that we're going to fight to bring as many resources to the district, but also address the issues. Because the reality is that the majority of homeless in district in the city of Sacramento are unfortunately in District Two. So I think we have two responsibilities to answer the call, to get people who are, who are living in Arcade Creek, literally, where I went there my first days in office with the Wellness Foundation and met individuals who would benefit from a well-run facility, housing facility, this is housing, not shelter, in the heart of District Two. So I think that those two things can coexist. But I also want to note that we, of course, don't control the siding of these micro villages, but I want to put on the record too, like you, that we want to put three out of the gate that we kind of set in motion two weeks ago. And it's my strong preference that we don't have one of those in District Two, especially with this project coming to fruition right away. I think that we need to have fairness throughout the city of Sacramento and the placement of these facilities as we spoke two weeks ago. So with that, I do support this project. I think that, you know, we heard earlier from the SHRA report how much we're doing with our resources and we spent, you know, hours on this two weeks ago, we're not doing enough. And to the credit of the applicant, he's been, you know, screaming at the city for years, you're spending too much per door, we could do it differently. And I was like, well, shut up or step up. And he stepped up and says, hey, here's a way how we can do it for a more affordable amounts, a fraction of the cost. And so I think this is a tremendous opportunity, but also a pilot too, to see how we can do more of these, because we need to serve more people with less money and we need to be more, more cost-effective. So I think this certainly answers the call. And with that, I'm in full support, appreciate the conversation. We have a motion and a second. With that, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Aye.
Councilmember Pluckebom?
Aye.
Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Wang?
Yes.
Mayor McCarty?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
All right, moving on to our public hearings.
Yes.
We have three. The first one is item number 15, Housing and Dangerous Buildings Case Fees, Findings of Fact for Special Assessment. And we have one public speaker on this item.
Okay. Peter, you start. Yeah, thank you, tell him to start. And while we're waiting.
Go ahead.
Please, if you're having conversations in the council chambers, please take it outside.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Talamontes and Councilmembers. I'm Peter Lemos, I'm your Code and Housing Enforcement Chief for the Community Development Department. The items before you are the Neighborhood Code Compliance and Housing and Dangerous Buildings Case Fees and Penalties for Special Assessment and/or Personal Obligation. I would like to present both items 15 and 16 concurrently for a separate vote. Item 15, the Housing and Dangerous Building Case Fees Staff Report lists an amended total of 80 properties with a total of $56,249 and $65 unpaid fees scheduled for liens against the properties. Two properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line items 13 and 92. For item number 16, Community Development Department Administrator Penalties and Neighborhood Code Compliance Case Fees Staff Reports listed amended total of 385 properties with a sum of $758,585.82 of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for special assessment and/or personal obligations against the property. Fourteen properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line numbers 18, 28, 77, 121, and 122, 168, 174, 234, 275, 339, 367, 505, 539, 555, and 632. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the two resolutions separately as amended to allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessments, levies, and/or personal obligations against these properties. And that concludes the presentation.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Councilmember Guerra?
Yeah, thank you, Peter. I just wanted to thank you for working for, with one of my constituents and I know there's more to come, but it's, I think, you know, particularly being a senior and a veteran, I mean, I think that's the, an important thing that we need to help, one, keep, you know, the quality of our community good, but also making sure that we're working with folks who've got some challenges as well. So appreciate that, thank you. And I'll go ahead and move, move the, open and close the public hearing and move the item, Vice Mayor.
So for the record, that will be opening and closing all three of the public hearings. Just the first one. We're going to do everyone, individual. Okay. And then Councilmember Maple second it. Okay, Councilmember Dickinson? Sorry. We have one public comment on this. On item number 15.
Peter, I have a quick question.
Then, sorry, I didn't mean to close the public hearing then. I'll retract the, I'll open the public hearing.
Is the purpose of holding this public hearing solely that if the action is taken, it makes the obligation personal to the property owner? And what I'm looking at is the staff report says the decision of the HCAB is final and conclusive and I infer from the remainder of that sentence that, that the only, the only path to reviewing that is judicial review. Is that, is that the case or can this council?
If you chose to remove the item from the list and the, and the, um, one that you chose to remove had already had a public, had a hearing, that they contested the item, the hearing officer found in favor of the city and you would basically be saying you remove it and you weren't finding in favor of the hearing officer that you appointed.
Uh, okay, but, but if there was something on the list today that we hypothetically said, you know what, we want to, we don't want, we want to remove that one, we, we would have the authority to do that.
Only if prior they had a, um, they had had and requested an administrative hearing.
Only, I'm sorry, only if they had requested what?
Administrative hearing. That means that the, um, person or the property requested a hearing to appeal the action taken by the city.
Uh, Councilmember Dickinson, the city attorney would like to respond to this.
Just to see if this might help, uh, Councilmember, so there's no de novo review here by the city council. What you're deciding is whether or not to assess these charges against their property and that's a decision you can make. You could decide an individual property could-
Not to do that.
Correct.
Okay. That's, that, that, thank you, that, that really, maybe I wasn't clear about that, but that's what I was getting at. So, so, um, we, we could essentially remove it from the list, but we, or we could, or could reduce the amount?
Typically what would happen is you could ask, uh, Mr., um, Lemos?
Lemos.
I actually have known him for many years, uh, to, to meet with him and, and they, they will and try to, if necessary, negotiate a resolution.
Okay. I just, just the staff report was, um, a little confusing to me and, and the extent that this mattered. Okay, thanks, I got it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, Mayor Protam, can you redo your motion, please?
Uh, yeah, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, but I just want to confirm Mr., uh, Mr. Lemos, because I, I see that five-three-three-zero Nelson Street, um, is still on the item there for, on, under Exhibit A. Am I reading this? That'll be an item, item sixteen.
No, I believe it was, uh, line item one-hundred-and-seventy-four.
Item seventy-four. Cause I, um, one-seventy-four, yeah, it's still, it's still there on the, on the attached report, so.
That was right into the record that I was removing that.
Ah, perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I didn't, I didn't hear that. Very good. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay. Wonderful. And now we have one person for public comments.
So the public hearing for item number fifteen, we have one public speaker, Luke Shar.
Yes. Hi, I'm here because I'm one of the properties for four-hundred-and-eighteenth Street. Um, I put in an ex parte to try to get, uh, a hearing to actually get this case heard. Um, so I'm trying to get an administrative hearing. I've had it filed on court and it's, uh, in front of the Judge Department Twenty-One right now. So if I could ask that my property get postponed until the hearing, I would really appreciate it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public hearing is item number sixteen, that is the Code Compliance Case Fees and Penalties Findings of Fact for Special Assessment.
Um, excuse me, Madam Clerk?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I got too excited.
Do we have a motion and a second on the last item?
Yes, we have a motion by Councilmember Guerra, a second by Councilmember Maple and if you're ready for the roll.
Yes, all of the favor, please say aye. If he knows or abstentions, hearing none. Pass this.
Okay. Now item number sixteen, uh, the Code Compliance Case Fees and Penalties Findings of Fact for Special Assessment.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and, uh, move, open and close the public hearing and move the item if there are no members of the public signed up to speak.
We have no public comment on this one.
And I'll open and close-
I'll second. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, open and close the public hearing, no public comment, correct?
No public comment and it was, uh, moved by Councilmember Guerra, seconded by, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
All's in favor, please say aye. If he knows or abstentions, hearing none.
And the last public hearing is item number seventeen, Vacation of the Public Road Easement at one-zero-one-six Carmelita Avenue, proceeding number VAC-two-four-dash-zero-zero-three.
My name is Thomas Adams with, uh, Engineering Service Division of the Public Works Department. Item seventeen on your council agenda, agenda is a request to vacate a roughly twenty-foot wide portion of public road easement located at ten-sixteen Carmelita Avenue in North Sacramento. The pub, the portion of the public road easement currently exists as a segment of the front yard space that is unimproved. Vacating this portion of the easement will assist in meeting the setback requirements